With the loss of many small-town newspapers, this is the main source for people to get their information about what's going on in their cities, so that discussion will be coming ahead, too. And then next week, I have Metro Cities Transportation and General Government, and then the Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Committee, and then Regional Council of Mayors, the Minnesota Mayor's Association, and then just as, I just thought I'd share it, I was asked by the League of Minnesota Cities Executive Director and Board to go on to the National League of Cities Board, and I did decline. I think things are just too busy here right now, but I was very humbled, being asked. Councilmember Doherty.
Yeah, we had a Park and Trail Commission meeting last night, continuing to kind of go through the park walkthrough list and those things, so. Did we schedule the, for Swagger Park?
Yes, Mayor and Council, the Swagger Park Playground Equipment Ribbon Cutting will be on Monday, October 16th at 5:00 p.m.
So, we got that? So, that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Liljgren.
I attended the Planning Commission meeting. Both items on the agenda for that meeting are on our agenda tonight under New Business, BNC, and I also will attend the Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Committee meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Runk.
Nothing to report.
Okay, on to staff. Chief Hanson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of quick things here, just to bring you up to speed here. We did get our squad car back from the BCA. They were holding on to that since March involving that investigation over in Stillwater with the active shooter and one of our officers being involved. That is now back and being repaired. We have school starting up next Monday, so we expect heavy traffic on 58th and Neel again as he learn their new routines, and that would be a busy time for us for the next couple of weeks, and we'll have extra patrol out there. And then new hire status, we're hoping to bring that new officer on pending council approval tonight, next week, and then we are currently backgrounding a second, for a second position that's still available, and that is going forward as well, and I'll bring you up to speed when that moves on, probably about another month for additional background process. Thanks.
Well, thank you. Assistant City Administrator Pinsky.
Mayor and Council, Sharon Binger at 6385 Pecan Avenue North was chosen as your most recent recycling award winner.
Thank you. Next is the Visitor Public Comments section, and this is an opportunity for the public to address the council with questions or concerns on any issue that are or are not as part of the agenda. Anyone want to come forward? Welcome back, Mr. Kramer.
Mayor, City Councilmember, staff, I'd like to comment, I'm Jim Kramer, 5475 Oak Green Place North. I'd like to comment about D under New Business, which is the citywide speed studies, and it looks to me like that is a $32,000 plan looking for a solution, looking for a problem to solve, and I say that for several reasons. First of all, the information gathered with the $32,000 investment is pretty much, I suspect, available with searches through the Police Department database, and I suspect most of the information could be gathered within 10 minutes by the Police Department. Second, the potential solutions such as reducing speed to 25 miles per hour do not require, in residential area, don't require any kind of study, the city can just do that on its own as outlined in the proposal. Third, even if the city wishes to reduce the speed limit even further, it could do so as long as it has a rational basis for doing it, and the information that is, quotes, "required" under the statute is, again, quite easily available through searches rather than necessarily doing studies, a $32,000 study. And finally, even with the $32,000 study, it really is just a study. There's no solution. For example, putting up speed limit signs, whatever changes would have to be made to provide a solution would be in addition to the $32,000 investment. So, we're talking far more than $32,000 for any kind of solution. So my suggestion would be that the city administration and staff, along with the Police Department, just find, look at what the, what the real problem is and come up with some common sense solutions to the, to the issues that have been raised. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Then we'll move on to the consent agenda, approved bills and investments, check 69657 through 69717 for a total of $317,662.44. Approved City Council Work Session Notes from August 8, 2023. Approved City Council Minutes, August 8, 2023. Approved the appointment of a full-time new hire police officer. Adopt the 2023 to 2028 anticipated capital improvement plan. Approved salary adjustment for exempt employees, and then the 2023-2024 E-TAC Appointment Letter of Support. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Doherty, is that a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Liljgren. Eric?
Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Liljgren.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to all old business, which is fall cleanup, and Jennifer, do you want to take that?
Yeah, sure. Mayor and Council, the City Council just held a work session regarding the fall cleanup. The City Council had directed staff to go out for RFP for the fall cleanup. One response was received. We did also receive an estimate from Tenne Sanitation based off of what they did for us in spring. The estimate that was received for, under the RFP, was from Curbside Waste Incorporated, and the City Council did discuss some options and would like to provide direction to staff on that.
Is there council discussion regarding that?
I can start. So I think the discussion was we'd go with the RFP from Curbside Consulting because they're a newer entity to the city, we would do so as long as there is a positive referral. If there is no referral or a negative referral, we will go with Tenne Sanitation. In addition, the council discussed the collection of appliances. Given the fees and given the changes in our garbage contract, there was discussion about whether we should pick up appliances, and the consensus was generally that we should not pick up appliances at the fall cleanup. I think, is there anything else I missed in that conversation?
And mattresses.
Mattresses.
And mattresses. Is that your motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Doherty, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'm opposed. That's 4-1. So move on to New Business, which is Notice of Retirement, Finance Director Betty Caruso. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, as, as I know in my memo, as anticipated, our long-serving Finance Director Betty Caruso has submitted her notice of intent to retire at the end of February. We're not sure what day that might be. We have that sneaky lead year in there, so we assume it's that last date. Anyway, it's probably important you start that process to think about her replacement, certainly with some adequate time to overlap. In 2010, when the city went out for a Finance Director hire, obviously that was an internal process, or internal search process to reach out versus a consultant-type process. I did put that packet in your, in your materials outline, or your council packet this time. Frankly, not much was substantive change in that, but I did, I did give a rough ballpark of the timeline, so that person's in place, hopefully early December, probably after Thanksgiving. But to kind of kick that off, really, I would argue you have really two possibilities. Assemble a subcommittee of maybe a couple of you folks and some others, department heads, what have you, certainly take input from your accountant, too, physician Kari as well, but that could, that group could go through the job descriptions, real timelines, and what have you, and then you could come back into the council and think about what your next steps are. But you wanted to have a position announcement in early September-ish, and I outlined it some dates. It seemed to work well the last time. Look who we got, right? So, God willing, we would get somebody of half that skill set at least. So, anyway, that would be my thought, to think about supporting a subcommittee to kind of kick off that process, and two, accept begrudgingly Betty Caruso's there.
I know we've done it where there's been two council members before on certain positions, so, and I haven't done it for quite a while, so I'd like to do that for this one, and then if there's another council member who would like to do that?
All good.
Okay, is it? And then as far as staff members, maybe, is there, are we?
No.
Yeah. He said he's okay with it.
Oh, okay. But then as far as staff members, I was thinking, well, Kari works so close with you, maybe her, and I know the chief's probably going to have his hands full, but maybe Andy? If he's interested, or Jennifer?
Maybe Jennifer. I think we have Jennifer and Kari's, so it makes sense.
Yeah, I think so, too, but I just was thinking, things are going to be busy for a couple of weeks, but it'll settle though. So, myself, Councilmember Runk, Kari, and Jennifer.
And would Betty want to?
Oh, I think you could give us some advice as far as the job description and those things. You're not going to get away that easy.
Yeah.
That would be good.
So I'll point her to.
We're not accepting it otherwise, Betty.
We haven't accepted it yet.
That's true. If we don't accept it, then she can't leave.
So I'll make that motion that we set up the small group first. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then unfortunately, the second item is to accept your letter of notice of retirement. We really appreciate all you've done. You've been fantastic. Do great budgets.
Thank you. That's because I have great leadership.
So is there a motion to accept Betty's letter?
One of us has to.
Do we have to do a roll call on this?
So moved begrudgingly.
I will second also begrudgingly.
All in favor? All begrudgingly.
Aye.
Next is Cryview Holdings, Siegfried, amended conditional use permit setbacks, parking, design guidelines, site plan review. Is that you, Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Tim Siegfried of Cryview Holdings has made this application. It's revisions to the approvals for the office building warehouse building at 5416 Stagecoach Trail North. The application consists of requests for amended conditional use permit to offer reduced setbacks in parking and site plan, and his on guidelines review. You might remember back in November of last year, you did approve the conditional use permit that was primarily for the outdoor storage element of it and the preliminary site plan and building. They have made some changes to this. It was always anticipated that this would come back for final approval at some point, so here we are in that stage of the process. Property is zoned business warehouse. The building with the 3,900 square feet of office building and 12,100 square feet of warehouse space has not changed from the previous approval. What has changed, though, if you look at the site plan, and the Apkins have provided paper copies, these 11-by-17s, which provide a really nice, on that first page, a site plan with the landscaping. You'll note that the building has been moved further north. There is a, there is two entrances onto Stagecoach Trail North. There have been discussions with Washington County on that. Their preference, at least the counties, they really haven't given a definitive answer on that, but it would be just to have one entrance point. If for some reason the county only allows them one entrance point, that northerly entrance could go, and they still would have more than adequate access in and out of the site. The important access is to the south so that they have, you know, ability to move, to move their trucks in and out of the warehouse facility. The setbacks, Business Warehouse District requires a 50-foot front yard, 20-foot side yard, and 20-foot rear yard, but if you have a situation where you're adjacent to a residential district, and on the north that is the case, a 50-foot is required. They're proposing a 30-foot building setback where that 50-foot is required, but if you remember, the old site plan had the drive aisle going around that side of the building, so actually this is less impact on the neighbors to the north. So it's a, it's a positive change to that site plan. Really no issue with the, the parking in that they have provided a few additional parking spaces more than what is required. That now requires a conditional use permit review. Mr. Mann has, has provided a review of the grading drainage and utility plans. Again, the, the building itself is positive. The Planning Commission felt that the site plan with the extensive landscaping, the appearance of the building, everything was very positive with this. So there is a resolution in your packet that reflects the recommendation of the, of the Planning Commission. We do have representatives from Siegfried here tonight, as well as a couple of planning commissioners, Jim and Tyler are here, if you have any questions. And I'll stand for any questions, too, if you have anything.
The only question I have, and just from looking at the site plan, to make sure that there's enough screening of some sort between here and the Olsons to the north.
I think if you look again through those.
It looks like it'll be really good, but just to make sure.
Yeah, you look.
Traffic coming through, you wouldn't want headlights coming through. Too many headlights coming through.
Right, you look at the, they've done some nice section maps, too, that show the landscape. They plan to bring in some pretty sizable trees also, you know, that, that's outlined in those 11-by-17s, what, what they plan to do. So I think the Planning Commission was, was positive, too. The city arbiters was positive. Now, there is an issue with, there was a number of trees that had to be removed. We always knew that there's going to be some tree replacement, obviously with redevelopment on the site, and, you know, the arbiters continues to work with them on, on that, on that situation, so.
And there's still a really strong buffer on the south side by the bus garage. They won't be probably moving too much of that, I assume.
Right.
Okay. Any questions for Scott or the applicant?
I'll move, I'll move the resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Liljgren. Eric? Roll call.
Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Liljgren.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Yes. When do you start building?
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is conditional use permit, 15405 57th Street for the Hayes rear side yard setback. Scott?
Yeah, this lot is, a lot that was created a few years ago, and two lots were created out of one lot. The subject lot bordering on 57th Street is about 15,000 square feet. That's the house that's being proposed, and the second lot on 56th Street is, was larger, 30,000 square feet, and that house had 56, 55 Peller. It's a little confusing because you've got, you know, the Peller as being the address for that lot, but, for that property that's already been built, but the new lot is addressed off of 57th. A conditional use permit was granted to vary from the rear setback by the council in 2019 for the house that's already been built. The property is zoned R1 Single Family District. Planning Commission reviewed this, also held the public hearing, recommended the approval with conditions, which you'll find in your resolution. The interesting thing is, so we have a situation with setbacks, and they're looking for a number of setbacks. The front yard setback requires a 30-foot, but an average situation that actually takes it down to 27.5 feet. The, and the front yard would be on Peller in this particular case. So with that averaging, they're looking at a setback requirement 27 feet and propose 25 feet. The house further to the south, the newer construction to the south that's already built, is also at 25 feet, so they've matched that setback, so that's positive. Side yard setback is 10 feet. Again, that would be to 57th Street, but because that's a street, that would be 30 feet because it's a corner lot, and they proposed a 20-foot setback there. There's a porch that comes out from there, but most of the house is, is at 30 or 33 feet. And then the opposite side, adjacent to, to the 56, 55 Peller Avenue, is a 10-foot requirement, and the 20 feet is proposed to serve trees. But then the rear yard setback, they're also looking for a variance from that. The Planning Commission discussed this, there's some discussion about preservation of trees, but because of the grading plan, there's no guarantee that those trees would, would survive, but the Planning Commission felt that, again, we've got a unique neighborhood. A lot of the houses were built prior to zoning requirements. You've got a lot of different housing styles, a lot of different areas of housing styles. You know, it's, it's a unique neighborhood, and it's been developed over, over a long period of time. They felt that reasonable, these are reasonable requests, they do not really, would not negatively impact the neighborhood, and in looking at the conditional use permit criteria, because this is a conditional use permit for these setbacks and not a variance, they felt that the, the house of design would fit the character of the neighborhood well and would be positive. So with that, they recommend it, and you'll see the one condition, just that the, our city engineer looks at the final grading and drainage plans and make sure that, that everything is adequate for that, for that site. So with that, any, any questions also? We do have the Hayes are here tonight, and again, the two planning commission members, if you have any questions.
Are there any questions for Scott or the Hayes family?
No, I'd make a motion.
I was just going to say, I think it looks good.
Yeah, I think it's.
It does?
Yep. So I would make a motion that we do the resolution.
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Doherty, second by Councilmember Johnson. Eric?
Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Liljgren.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Yes, welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you so much.
All the neighbors want to know, when do you start digging?
Well, it's getting pretty late now, but I think we might have to wait till spring. Yeah, I really want to do a build in the winter.
Sure. I built one during the winter, it was the best house ever.
I don't want to work out in the cold.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is city, citywide speed studies, STAMTEC estimates. Eric, is this you or Lee?
Well, I suppose it's maybe a brief diatribe on my part. The council asked the city engineer to prepare the cost estimate and some of the background about the speed study that might be necessitated to consider reducing speeds potentially down to 20 miles per hour throughout various neighborhoods, whether that be citywide or even the adjacent neighborhood here east of City Hall. So, and a lot of that stemmed from the early August, late July conversations with that neighborhood and those communities. So, at our workshop with those folks, we promised that we would investigate that opportunity or what that might include and what that cost is, so I believe Councilmember Johnson was part of that, obviously, and interested in that data as well. So with that, Lee did some great work, and we'll find out what he has to say.
Thanks, Eric, Mayor members of the council. This is also somewhat of a tieback to last March of 2022, where we first started looking at the speed limit possibilities with the new statute that had been changed a couple of years ago, and we had kind of just a real general memo with some general ideas about what costs might be, and I think based on that, and like Eric mentioned, the meeting we had about a month ago, looking at seeing what would that really potentially cost versus that range that we had. And so the first thing, just to touch base real quick on the cover memo that I put on this, I did talk a little bit about the statute and the two different levels of looking at speed limits that cities can do, and Mr. Kramer mentioned some of this as well, that, you know, the first option is the council has, or a city has, is to lower speed limits to 25 miles per hour without doing any further studies. That does, however, include, if that speed limit is lowered, signing every street, at the beginning and end of every street. So there is, as was mentioned, a cost to that, that we have not looked at yet at this point, as far as what that might end up being. The second part. The second part, which is more interesting, is lowering it beyond 25 miles per hour. We do have to do, the statute does require, at a minimum, a safety, engineering, and traffic analysis that at a minimum considers national urban speed limit guidance and studies, local traffic crashes, and methods to effectively communicate the change to the public. And it is absolutely correct that things like local traffic crashes can be, you know, researched rather quickly with the police department and other agencies throughout the city. However, one of the things that, you know, when the statute came out, there, I mean, the guidance for what this traffic, you know, safety and engineering study composes is purely just exactly what I read. So there was no further guidance from the state as to what that needs to include. And so as cities went forward to go ahead and look at, you know, lowering speed limits lower than 25, there was kind of a, sort of a unofficial consensus among cities about what they were going to take a look at to try to have a document that would justify the decision and then be something that the city could lean on if anybody ever came up and wanted to argue those points, you know, that there was enough of a study done, which includes, you know, things other than crashes, includes actual speeds in neighborhoods. So that entire entails, you know, putting out tube counters, you know, for a period of time and doing that type of data collection, looking at, you know, average annual traffic. And I think in the past with this statute, you know, the state was the arbiter of speed limits. Anytime a speed limit was changed, the state would come in and do a very, you know, concise study of what the situation was before they would put a recommendation down. And as the city here knows, you know, sometimes those speed limits might get lowered, sometimes they might get raised or kept, you know, where they were. So I think, I think that's why the typical study includes what we've included here. That said, there are things in here, you know, one of the things, if you look at the tasks and the fees, you know, there's a lot of time in there for meetings. So there's some, you know, relatively decent public engagement included in here. And if the council were to decide that they truly did want to look at lowering speeds, you know, below 25 miles an hour and did want to move forward with a study like this, you know, this is certainly something we could sit down and talk about and, you know, possibly revise to the point of what the city, you know, ultimately needs. And, you know, this price could be different. So with that said, as was mentioned before, the fee that we've identified with the scope that we've shown at the moment is $32,450. We did include a schedule that includes, if it were to be authorized this evening, would end in February with, you know, a public meeting to communicate the results.
You know, we were at that neighborhood meeting, you know, initially it was, people were saying that people were driving too fast, then it turned to, well, they're not stopping, they're not slowing down. The temporary stop sign is in there now. But then I wish I brought my notes with me, and I didn't, because I don't remember the gentleman's name, but then he said, I don't really think there needs to be a speed study as much as there needs to be solutions for people not stopping or using 58th Street as a cut through. And I know you were taking a lot of notes, I was, Carly, you were there, you were taking a lot of notes for other solutions. You know, they came up with the one of one-way only on 57th Street at Osgood that didn't seem like a real good solution. You know, there were a couple of things that were thrown out. So I was hoping maybe come back with something like that before we jump into doing, spending this kind of money on a speed study.
When I kind of agreed to that, having heard some resident concerns in attending that meeting, and also talking with Chief Hansen, who I think he recommended that we don't go lower than 25 anyway. So I don't think this traffic study is needed now knowing, because I think there was a misunderstanding that we'd have to have the speed limit study to go down to 25. I think if we don't need the traffic study to go down to 25, that's something we should have staff internally, Chief Hansen and Lee, consider whether that would be a good idea through residential streets without the traffic study.
And is it just one or two particular streets where there's the issue, like say it's a 58th Street, or are we having people throughout the city that are having trouble?
Yep.
I hate to have a knee-jerk reaction just because of one street.
Well, and this would be residential, I think, whole cloth. And I know Councilmember Liljgren has brought up other streets prior to 57th Street being an issue. So I think that'd be a good thing for staff to come back with a recommendation about if 25 miles per hour would be a good idea.
I agree. I think part of that should also be what the cost would be to re-sign the city.
Yep. Agreed.
Definitely.
I would have no intention of going lower than 25.
Yeah, see, that's just.
Because I mean, all you'd be doing then is let's hire another police officer to sit out there and try and enforce it, because.
He can walk faster.
I mean, 25 would make sense. And the fact that Stillwater is at 25, and we do have some streets where we integrate with them. So I mean, I'd go along with the idea that Carly has, that, you know, yeah, we find out how much the signage would cost, whether or not it's worth it.
Yep.
I'm okay with that.
Do we need? Why don't we just make a motion, just to make it clear that staff will come back with recommendations at a future to-be-determined meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Liljgren. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then we move on to approve MINDOT 60th Street turnback of limited areas to the city. Eric?
Thank you. Mayor and Council, earlier this year, you recall, May was late 2022 now that I think about it, the MINDOT asked the city to amend its municipal boundary in areas near Norrell Avenue. It was approximately 13.4 acres, that long linear strip, if you recall. So that was completed and done, and following with the state office of the district hearing is all that completed. So all those areas are now in the city of Oak Park Heights. And what we anticipated is that MINDOT is going to come back and ask to turn back those roads in total to the city now that they are fully within the city of Oak Park Heights. So in your packet, there is a map showing and highlighting in yellow essentially the frontage road from Neal Avenue around over to Norrell, and then just slightly past Applebee's. I noticed the map was cut off, and then there's another one in front of your seat here. Anyway, so the city already has pretty much unilateral maintenance responsibilities out there anyway. So I believe MINDOT pretty much used this as, I think, a cleanup thing on their part to address all of their responsibilities to get them a very, I suppose, nothing much more than a cleanup. I mean, it's all of the city's burdens for plowing, reconstruction, resurfacing, what have you. They are yours in effect. So the only positive thing I could maybe reference is, well, you're kind of responsible from a maintenance standpoint, but at least you get to control them then in a greater depth. So I don't know what that really means, but it's something, maybe. So if you're okay with it, then there's no reason you have to be. MINDOT is asking you to accept these as a turnback. So if you do feel you're comfortable with that concept, they're asking for an adoption of that resolution that you close in your packet and to sign a roadway jurisdiction agreement, and that document is in your packet. The resolution is, allows the mayor, the city administrator execute the agreements and subdue any revisions the city attorney might feel is necessary. So I think is what it is. So.
Any questions for Eric regarding that? Is there a motion to accept the, or approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Liljgren. Eric Rohan?
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Liljgren?
Yes.
Councilmember Runk?
Yes.
Mayor McCutcheon?
Yes. Next is other council items and announcements. And the big announcement of the day is today is Eric's last council meeting with all of us. And he'll be leaving the city next week. And there will be an open house here at City Hall next Wednesday, the 30th, from noon to 5:00 for anyone who would like to come and wish Eric well. And then, Mike, you have something too?
Yep. As you know, and I try to keep you updated, I've been communicating with, on my own, with the county over the 58th Street extension. I had a letter that was in the weekly notes a couple of weeks ago, the last time that we did weekly notes. I did receive a response. I will be putting that into this week's weekly notes. And I'm currently drafting a response to their response, because I've been, through my research, what I found is that the developer, Summit Management, Hy-Vee, and the county began this process in 2017, mid-2017. That's, I've got the documentation from the developer on that. So that's two and a half years before they ever came to us. Stillwater documents indicate that they became involved late 2018, 2019, which is a year and a half, a year, year plus ahead of us. By the time that they reached out to us, they basically had a understanding, they don't want to use the word agreement, understanding that the developer would provide properties for the, right away for the Manning 36 project along Manning Avenue. He would also provide them with a construction easement for the, to allow the traffic to get out of Sanctuary during the construction period. And in exchange, the county would build the road for him. And Stillwater was brought into the project in order to, Stillwater would agree to, agree to annex it. They would agree to run the utilities. But then Stillwater and the county would provide tax abatement funds in order to pay for the infrastructure. So that's what was in place. They were working through everything. They came to us, asked for money, and we kind of threw a, something into the gears, sand into the gears when we started asking questions. And that's basically where it is at this point. So.
Thanks for the update. But once again, thank you, Eric, for 20 years of lots of laughs.
It's been a pleasure.
Okay. Are there any other announcements? Then we'll move into a work session. So is there a motion to recess to a work session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Liljgren, second by Councilmember Doherty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then Kevin, do you want to say anything that we'll be coming back, or we're not?
Well, so the process here is to review potential candidates for the city administrator position. And really what we're doing is just selecting the finalists for interview process out in September. I don't know that that requires a lot of formality of a motion and things of that nature. And even if we can, even if we did, I think you can technically make a motion during the course of a work session if really necessary. So we probably don't have to have the videographer stick around for that. Just make the recommendations for interviews, and we'll, public understanding that we're proceeding with that process in September to schedule those interviews.
So we'll adjourn during our work session, and you can give an update at the start of the next meeting?
Yeah, and we'll just adjourn during the work session.
Okay. Well, thanks everybody for coming. Don't forget to come back for our party.
Pardon me?
I did.